For the Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Beckles?
Present.
Commissioner Broadwater?
Present.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Winn?
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Here.
Commissioner Fong?
Here.
Chair Beard?
Here.
Okay, first item is Oral Communications on Housing Authority Items. Seeing none, we'll move to the Item Number Two, Consent Items.
Move to approve.
Second.
A call for the vote?
Most received, seven yes votes.
Right, public hearings, none. And so, Items for Consideration. We have the Revised 2013 Housing Authority Administrative Plan. Is there a staff report?
Yes, there is, Mr. Chairman, and Danny Winn is here to give a staff report on this item.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. The item before you tonight is the Revised Housing Authority Administrative Plan. The Department of Housing and Urban Development requires the Housing Authority to adopt an administrative plan. The purpose of the plan is to outline the Authority's policies and procedures in the administration of the housing program. The Revised Administrative Plan includes language responding to HUD policies such as verification of income and assets, proof of domestic violence, requirement for carbon monoxide devices, steps for rent increases, and procedures in case of insufficient funding. The revision is to accommodate regulatory changes in the program to improve procedures and to clarify policies. Staff recommends that the Housing Authority adopt the Revised Administrative Plan. That concludes my report. I'm available for questions.
Any questions? I just have one related to sequestering. Is that more of a budget question? We have no idea how that may impact the funding for this plan. That's different from the plan itself. What are we doing? Just adopting the plan, per se? And...
Yeah, at this point, I don't think it anticipates the effects of the sequestering, so we'd have to come back with a later adjustment.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
I second that.
Take that as a motion. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay. Call for the vote.
Most received, seven yes votes.
Okay, matters from any of the Commissioners? Seeing none, we adjourn.
At this time, we'll reconvene the City Council. We were in closed session for a study session and a closed session item that we need to... I guess we need to talk about it. The closed session item, the City Council authorized the initiation of legal proceedings to obtain the appointment of a receiver for the property located at 10332 Stanford Avenue, Garden Grove. The City Council has authorized this unanimously. At this time, we'll have our pledge of allegiance, have the prayer first, and our pledge of allegiance.
Dear God, we gather to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us, and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Dana, would you lead us in the...
Please, you hand you on your heart, and please repeat with me. I'm sorry, please say the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's my understanding that we have a presentation this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a very special presentation, and I'd like Susan Emery to make that presentation this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Members of the City Council. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council pays tribute to a man whose constant and meaningful work in the community has earned him the prestigious title of the 2013 Garden Grove Citizen of the Year from the Cypress College Americana Awards. Would William J. Dalton please come forward? Each year, the Cypress College Americana Awards honor citizens from the eight surrounding cities, including Garden Grove, that form Cypress College's primary service area. Award recipients are chosen based on their humanitarianism, philanthropy, and partnership efforts within their communities. Bill made Garden Grove his home in 1967. Shortly after, he accomplished his goal of becoming a police officer by joining the Garden Grove Police Department. While working various shifts and raising a family, Bill returned to college to earn his Bachelor of Arts degree in Administration of Justice at Cal State University Fullerton, graduating with honors. After 26 years with the department, Bill retired as a police lieutenant and, in 1998, won election to the Garden Grove City Council, serving until 2004. Respected by both his peers and the citizens of Garden Grove, Bill was elected, then re-elected three more times to serve as mayor. A post he held until last December, 2012. During his time as mayor, Bill devotedly volunteered his time with Meals on Wheels at St. Columban Church. He visited several Garden Grove elementary schools and read books to the children. He also awarded over 150 plaques to young men earning their Eagle Scout awards. In addition to serving as mayor, Bill recognized the importance of the business community by implementing the Business Retention and Attraction Program, where he honored outstanding businesses at City Council meetings and personally visited more than 200 new and established businesses throughout the city. Bill's exceptional service to the city and community of Garden Grove goes beyond words and is further exemplified by his selection as Cypress College Americana's 2013 Garden Grove Citizen of the Year. At this time, the City Council would like to present Bill with a resolution in honor of his meritorious recognition.
Let me read a little bit of this. This City of Garden Grove Resolution, William J. Dalton, 2013 Cypress College American Awards, Garden Grove Citizen of the Year. Whereas born and raised in San Francisco, California, William J. Dalton made Garden Grove his home in 1967, and shortly thereafter, accomplished his goal of becoming a police officer. This goes on and on and on about him, and I'm not going to read the whole thing. I'm going to read all the whereas's. Whereas, 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 whereas. Whereas Bill's exceptional service to the city and community of Garden Grove beyond words and further exemplify his... by his selection as Cypress College Americana 2013 Garden Grove Citizen of the Year. Let me say that Bill was an exceptionally wonderful mayor. Congratulations.
One, two, three.
You want to say a few words, Bill? I just want to tell you, you know, it's funny, Bruce knows this. I was on the council for six years and then mayor for eight years, and every year, except one, I missed Americana Awards. But as a mayor, you escort the person down that's going to get the award. And I escorted a lot of people, but to be honest with you, I never thought that Bruce would be escorting me down. No, I'm very honored and humbled by this award, and thank you very much. Aaron Schultz... Oh, wait a minute. Let me announce what I'm doing. At this time, we will go to Oral Communications and have public comments for the City Council, the Successor Committee, and the Sanitary District. Are you Aaron Schultz?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Members of the City Council. My name is Aaron Schultz. I'm a resident of the City of Garden Grove. I'm also a former employee. I worked in the Economic Development Department, and I'm a scoutmaster for Troop 1165. We're chartered through the LDS Church on Lampton. And I just wanted to say that I'm here with three of our Boy Scouts this evening. We're working on our citizenship and the community merit badge. All three of the boys are currently Star Scouts, so we're looking forward to them earning their Eagles in the next year, year and a half. And they're excited to be here. This is their first time ever seeing a City Council meeting, so it's a great opportunity for them to learn more about how our city government works. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, and staff. There are a lot of people in Garden Grove who unfortunately have reached the point in their lives when transportation becomes a problem for them. They can no longer drive a car. Many of them have difficulty even walking. And they rely on various organizations to provide them transportation. Now, one of the ways that they get around is through a program called Access. This is a program of the Orange County Transportation Authority, and there are buses, you've probably seen them driving around, small buses that say "Access" on them. These are buses that are specially equipped to allow people in wheelchairs, for instance, to be able to get on the bus and go to various places for recreation, for shopping, for business, for medical needs. And they have a small fee that they pay for each time they ride these buses. Also, there is a contract with a taxi company that does the same thing, that goes around and provides transportation for these people. I have the privilege of being the vice chair of the Special Needs Advisory Committee of OCTA. And at our meeting today, it was announced that there is going to be a change in the company that provides transportation. Now, there are two companies that handle special needs transportation. One of them is MA, and the other is... I lost the name. Okay.
Veolia.
Anyway, those two companies, one provides the direct route service, and the other one is the one that provides the special routes, when people call up to have somebody pick them up. Now, because of budgets and such, OCTA has to consider the cost of these programs. And the contract for the current company that is doing the special pickups is going to expire, so the OCTA meeting next month, they're going to be considering a new contract. And from the way things appear as far as the analysis, they may be going to a different company to provide the service. However, one thing is in the contract that they will retain the same drivers and same staff, so people can be assured, although they may read about it in the newspaper about the change, they can be assured that they will have the same service and the same excellent drivers to give them the transportation they need to get to the places they need to go. Thank you.
Broadwater. Say it again. Good evening, Mayor, Broadwater, City Council staff, and the good people of Garden Grove. My name is Josh McIntosh. I'm a fourth-generation resident, homeowner, small business owner, and a concerned resident. I stand before you tonight to comment on the recent event that took place at Zlakets Market on Wednesday, the 20th. Zlakets Market and the syndicated radio station KFIM 640 held a cash mob event and broadcasted live on our historic Main Street. Hundreds of people showed up and made the trip to Garden Grove to show their support for Orange County's longest-running family business. They each spent $20 or more, and they all shared the belief that this modest mom-and-pop shop deserved to stay in business and that it truly represents a golden era of the American way that has since disappeared by way of the big-box stores. Zlakets Market has remained true to their belief in quality products, personal customer service, and a strong sense of community pride, no matter how much our demographics or landscape have changed. They shine like a diamond in the rough, when sadly, Garden Grove, or for that matter, most of America, have lost that kind of a connection with a local merchant. And I'm talking about Walmarts. Now, I was listening to the KFI live broadcast when I heard our city manager, Matt Fratell, whose salary we Garden Grove residents generously pay over $20,000 each month. Mr. Fratell spoke of his enduring support for our downtown Main Street and told the listeners that the city has added more parking, been promoting the street, and helping to loosen the restrictions on the entertainment laws on Main Street. Well, I certainly hope that we can expect to see that become a reality. We've already lost the east parking lot to the colleges. We're still threatened by another condo complex to be built on the west side parking lot. The small parking lot created on the private land had been leased for two years by the city, but we stopped making payments on it, and now its future is questionable. Well, it all sounded really nice to hear on the radio, but I'd really love to see our Main Street become a bustling location again, and I believe it can. First of all, we need to get our theaters up and running again, with more entertainment for locals and for our resort-area tourists. We need to tie it in with the new hotels, whether or not they claim to be located in Garden Grove or in Anaheim South. We need those tourists to spread their money throughout the city, not just on Harbor Boulevard. I know that with some brainstorming, we can get a lot more people to buy in Garden Grove, and I'm offering my help in whatever I can do. Our city can do a lot more to attract new businesses and encourage more shopping within our borders. As I've stated in the past, community benefit agreements would be great. We need to overhaul our business license department. There is no excuse for more and more marijuana dispensaries to pop up each month, as they still are, because we're not on top of who we give a business license to. It's ridiculous for the city to claim they have no control over who's doing business here. We should have an online business directory as a part of our city website, listing an accurate description, the contact info, and location of every licensed business or service in this city. People could easily find a product or service right here in our city and support local business. I'm available for such a project immediately. We can offer new manufacturing companies a tax break to set up their companies here. We have way too many vacant buildings. We can offer them more of a break if they hire our residents. We have too many unemployed people. We need to start taking care of our own and not just the hotel and condominium developers. I understand how much money is generated by the tourism bed tax and property taxes, but we've got to look at what kind of jobs are we creating here? What's it like to live in one of those overcrowded complexes or work in that hotel? Garden Grove is inviting their second Walmart location to open here. It's a sad day when we invite an employer who only pays low wages, sells shoddy foreign products made in a sweatshop, and offers little hope for better living in our community. Walmart is known for failing to pay their employees a decent wage that supports a family or cover their health care needs. The average Walmart employee takes home less than $250 a week and lives below the poverty line. Most employees of Walmart are forced to participate in one form of government assistance or another. Walmart is the largest importer of Chinese-made products in the United States, with 85 percent of their products shipped in from China. Is this the future of Garden Grove? As an American, I feel it's my duty to never shop at a Walmart and to speak out and do whatever we can when we witness this financial aggression against America.
Hush. Your time is up.
I appreciate...
The little red light means you're through.
I'm never through. I'll see you in two weeks. Thank you for the opportunity.
John O'Neill?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. On a lighter note here, I just have a couple of quick items. First of all, I wanted to congratulate Mayor Dalton. My family has known the Dalton since they moved to the city. My folks came here in '55, and we attend... I'm the youngest of five, so we all attended St. Columban. So I went to school with the mayor's daughter, Pam, for eight years at St. Columban. So he could have easily retired and went and sat on a beach somewhere, but he decided to get involved in his community that he loved so much, so I really want to thank him for his service. The only other thing I had was I wanted to be the spokesperson for the Women's Civic Club of Garden Grove, which my mother is a member of and has been for many years, past president there and all that. And I try to help them out, keeping the building up to par and all those things, but they wanted me to let you know, to put on your calendar, that June 8th, they are going to hold a fundraiser dinner to support... All the proceeds would go to the... to benefit the Gem Theater. As you know, there was a fire in 2011 and the devastation there, so the Women's Civic Club will be holding a fundraiser dinner dance. It's a dinner dance, it'll probably be about five or six hours long. I believe it's going to start at 6:00 PM. There'll be flyers. I'll bring flyers here, and if you look at the Garden Grove Journal, it will be advertised in the Garden Grove Journal. And they will have a dinner dance, and it will be held at the club at the corner of Gilbert and Chapman on June 8th, 2013. And please watch the Journal, and flyers will be available soon. And also, I wanted to encourage any women in Garden Grove that are looking for something to do. The Women's Civic Club is a great opportunity. It's a nonprofit organization. They have events there daily for women that like to play cards or do crafts or other things. So I would encourage the women that maybe don't have something to do, maybe their kids are getting older, they need to get involved with some more women, I'd say go out and do that. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have no further cards. Anybody else want to speak? Now's your chance. Oh, Peter, I'm sorry. I had your card. I wonder what I did with it.
I forgive you, Bruce. Good evening, Council, Mayor, and staff. I'm here once again on behalf of the Vietnam War Museum of America Foundation to promote the third speaker in our speaker series. This time, it's Jose Ramos, Vietnam veteran, who spent six years getting Congress to approve Vietnam Veterans Day, which is on March 30th of every year. And this year, he will be our keynote speaker on Thursday, March 21st, 2013, from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the Courtyard Center at... here on Main Street, 12732 Main Street in Garden Grove. And California became the first state in the nation to recognize Vietnam Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day, and the City of Garden Grove became the first city in Orange County to recognize Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day. So, once again, on behalf of the museum, I want to encourage everyone to come out and listen to our lecture series and help promote the building of this museum. In future council meetings, you're going to hear a lot more about the progress of the museum. Well, on a personal note, as a former soldier representing the United States Army from the Vietnam era, I want to read a couple lines from Bruce Hughes's Vietnam Anthology. "That distant land, Vietnam, I must go there. I must protect it, not my flag. I must kill, or I will die there, and come home in a body bag." While many of us did, 58,000 were killed there, many came back crippled and wounded from this war. And the Vietnam veterans adopted a saying that we will never forget our own. But many also were bi, gay, trans, sexual, and lesbian soldiers that were in a closet. These soldiers went to Vietnam, fought and died, and protected the Vietnam independence movement. Many of them were left dead on the battlefields, and from a personal point as a soldier, they have a right to march in a parade on any street that's paid for with public taxpayer money. And Abraham Lincoln made a statement in this country that all Americans were equal, not three-fifths of a human being, like the Constitution once said. So, you know, I think that it's time that everyone in this community realizes that we're all here, this is what makes this country so great. We're all fought for the same freedoms and independence movement in this country. That First Amendment gives us all the same equal rights in this country. And you also have the right to do what you want on private property, but on a public street... I was a soldier, and I had eggs thrown at me in a parade, and I know what that's like. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. At this time, we're going to recess the City Council, and we are going to hear from the Successor Agency and then the Sanitary District.
I think we'll call the Successor Agency meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Broadwater?
Here.
Member Winn?
Here.
Member Fong?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
Chair Jones?
Here. Start with Consent Items.
Move to approve?
Second.
Call the vote?
Most received, five yes votes.
We have no public hearings and no items. Any matters from Members?
No.
Seeing none, we will adjourn.
Sanitary District? Oh, I'm the guy at the Sanitary District, forget it.
I believe I am, your honor. Because I was elected to the presidency last time.
The Sanitary District.
It's not listed properly, but you're right, last time, yeah.
It is not listed properly. I look at it.
That's all right. I'll just take it from here. Matt Secretary, please call roll.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Winn?
Here.
Member Fong?
Here.
Vice President Beard?
Here.
And I did it wrong. Member Broadwater?
I'm here.
You're president.
We'll go to Consent Item Number Two there. Motion approved, please.
Move to approve.
Second. Call for a vote? All right, no public hearings.
Most received, five yes votes.
Oh, sorry, Matt Secretary. No public hearings, items for consideration is none. Any matters from the board? All right, we'll adjourn to the next time, which is March 26th at 6:30.
Okay, at this time, we'll reconvene the City Council and go to Consent Items.
Mr. Mayor, it's recommended that Items 7A through 7K be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion or actions requested by a Member.
I'd like to address Item 7F, please, on the issue of the agreement with the Boys and Girls Club to provide the juvenile diversion services. I'm actually an adjunct or...
Associate.
Associate Board member with them. Basically, I have no financial interest in how we vote, and I can't vote on the actual board for the Boys and Girls Club, so I don't foresee a conflict, but I want to make sure I had full disclosure.
What did our attorney say?
I did speak with Councilmember Fong on that issue, and I agree completely with his statement.
Very well. Okay.
Move the items?
Wait a minute now, are we moving all seven of them?
Moving the whole thing.
Moving the whole thing, good.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Most received, five yes votes.
Mr. Fratella, go to the public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. It's a resolution regarding adjustments to the vehicle code, and our... Tom Nixon is here to give staff report on this item.
Any questions for staff?
We're going to give the report.
Okay, might help.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, in both 2013 and 2014, the city council
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, in both 2008 and 2010, the State of California imposed surcharges on city parking violation fines. Those surcharges are used to fund state court construction. In response to the first state surcharge, the city raised its parking fines to account for the revenue lost to the state. After the second state surcharge in the amount of $3 per violation, the city did not raise the parking fines. As a result, the city has been receiving reduced revenue for parking fine violations. Staff recommends that the City Council conduct a public hearing on the proposed parking fine increase of $3 per violation and adopt the resolution raising the parking fine amounts to account for the $3 per violation surcharge that the city is being required to transmit to the state. And that concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff, gentlemen? Hearing none, at this time, we will open the public hearing. Does anybody like to speak on this issue? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
Send a second, call for the vote.
Motion received five yes votes.
Mr. Fratell, let's go to ordinances presented for second reading.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, 11A. It's ordinance number 2827, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove adopting a First Amendment to the Development Agreement between the City of Garden Grove and Landmark Hotels 2 LLC for property located on the west side of Harbor Boulevard, north of Chapman Avenue at 11767 Harbor Boulevard and 12261 Chapman Avenue, Garden Grove, parcels number 23318202 and 23318101.
Entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received five yes votes.
Mr. Beard.
Yeah, I want to say I attended a great event this last weekend. West Garden Grove had their Little League Parade. It was so entertaining, and the council was there, and the mayor, and, boy, it's baseball season. But I really want to thank a lot of people who made it possible, be it the league itself, the parents, its president, the board, but also, I think recognition should go to our own staff for making it work out so the season would happen for the Little Leaguers. They were being displaced from Bell because of renovations at that location. We did our best as a city to facilitate that, but it was the efforts of our staff, and it was efforts mostly on the part of the league itself and all the parents. And there will be a season this year, which is great. They may lose some Little Leaguers. I doubt it. It was a good turnout, it was a great turnout, it was an excellent event, and baseball time is here, and I'm sure it's going to be a great season for them as well. And another thing, I'd like to, I guess, welcome LULAC, League of Latin American Citizens. They opened up some new offices in Garden Grove, and they're a civil rights advocacy group, and they're there to help citizens in all areas of employment and education. So they have established offices in Garden Grove, right down the street here, so I welcome them to our city. They had a grand opening on Friday, council attended, and the mayor. So I wish them well and continued success. They've been around for 84 years, and I wish them continued success for the next 84 years and hopefully in our city as well. So that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I want to congratulate former Mayor Bill Dalton for his Americana Award. I think it's very well-deserved. And also, I really like the Women's Civic Club. I like to visit them sometimes. June 8th, I can't because that's my brother's wedding, and I don't really have a lot to report, except that I went to a lot of ceremonies for the Tet Luna New Year's in the Vietnamese community. Very formal, very touching, a lot of prayers for the best. So I want to congratulate those groups that still follow through with the traditions. And to remind everyone to please continue to buy in Garden Grove. We saw the budget report today, and I think we're doing very well. We're increasing in the revenues, so I think people are now realizing that by buying in our own city, we help our own citizens and as well as our businesses. Thank you.
I just wanted to take an opportunity to congratulate again former Mayor Bill Dalton. As you remember from my swearing-in, he actually was the one who swore me in, and I have to joke with the mayor that I felt like it was a change of the guards. It was just an honor to be there with him on Friday night, actually Saturday night, for the Americana Award. You know, there was a lot of great people there who actually receive awards, but when they played the bit about our mayor, I mean, it was just cut above as far as how he spoke and how he represented the city so well. So I was so honored to be there, to share that with him, and to also know him as a person. Secondly, just to dovetail off of what Councilman Beard said, when I was over there with the Little Leaguers, it was really awesome because all these little tiny young men and ladies were running around. I'm thinking, here's going to be what I'm expecting to get to in the next one or two years, so looking forward to that. And lastly, just wanted to share with everyone, as you remember from the induction, that I also proposed to my fiancee at that time, and all the well wishes that came in afterwards. Well, after this meeting and before our next meeting will be our engagement ceremony over in Houston, so I'll certainly keep everyone informed of what's going on. But thank you once again for all your love and support that you gave to Cindy and me. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I just have one item that's pertaining to one of our very own commissioners, one of our traffic commissioners. Randy Arbghast and his wife Edie are coming up on their 20-year wedding anniversary, so I just wanted to wish them a big congratulations. Edie, your husband put me up to saying, "Thank you for the best 20 years of his life." So congratulations, you guys. You might just make it.
I also went to the Americana event, and actually, I stood up with Mayor Dalton when he got the award. Bill Dalton and I really go back a long time. I was the mayor when he first got on the City Council, and I do believe that he voted no on everything I voted yes on and vice versa. But over the years, we became very good friends and got along well with each other, and 90% of the time voted together. And he certainly deserved the award, so I just really felt it an honor to be up there with him. At this time, we will close the City Council meeting and come back on March 12th at 5:30 PM. Thank you very much.